Accept this agreement and whatever you want to call it, cohabitate with Solon or any of the identity townships that we serve. We may have to move. Several, several years ago, there was a committee put together to locate potential sites for a new fire barn. That was about ten, fifteen years ago. I think our first step, we need to know what we're going to do, this council will have to decide whether we go with Solon's department in there.
Well, I think the first thing is get the group report.
Yeah.
And there too. I've seen my experience with these types of studies, they're going to have a number of recommendations. So then the council's going to have to decide what are the recommendations that we're going to pursue. So there's going to be some study.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Um, Solon Township just built a brand-new fire barn, correct?
No.
No?
No, they didn't.
No.
Okay, they haven't built a fire barn. For some reason, I thought they had.
They renovated their old one.
Okay, they renovated it?
Just upstairs for training. They took over the old township offices.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how much money they have invested. Like, is it even a possibility that we could join forces? I mean, if they just built a brand-new building, then they probably don't want us to pick something on the border.
That's, the study may tell us that.
Right, but I didn't, if they already built it, then...
No, they haven't.
Okay. Mr. Fraser, do you have anything to, like, which, I, my understanding is that you had some input on some original blueprints. What's your feelings about how this, you're the one who has to, where the rubber meets the road.
I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I'm probably not going to be around by the time this thing is built. I'm looking a couple of years and I'm going to hike around down the road. After being in the business for over forty years, I think it's time to hang it up. However, I have to agree with Mr. Taylor that let's not put the horse cart before the horse. Let's, let's find out what this, and I emphasize the word feasibility study is going to do for Solon and Cedar. And understand that we cover a certain Nelson Township, we contracted with them people. We're talking about extending that to a three-to-five-year contract, it's not a yearly thing. We owe it to them people to stay within a reasonable distance. If we put a fire station out of seventeen mile on White Creek on some vacant property, that's going to extend their in-service time and arrival time and stuff. So again, Mr. Taylor has a very valid point. Let's, let's just wait and see what happens with this feasibility study. And I agree, we, we need to relocate. However, where that might be, as yet to be seen.
Okay.
Now, would it be hopeless to put it down for the old community building? Now we're dropping part. Now, do we, do we, we own city property? Do we own anything big enough? The house, what we need. I'm not asking for a tax law, I'm explaining to Mr. Mayby, I want something that's feasible, usable, something pleasant to the eye, and something fairly economic. I don't want a tax law, I want a building that's going to house what I have today with the possibility of extension in the future.
Did you feel like, based upon what you saw of blueprints, that that's even an option in that space for the old community building?
That will be an option, but again, like the...
Other options as well, I get it.
There's, there's concerns about public parking. If we're going to bring more businesses downtown and we're going to, we're going to make it easier for the business owners to operate downtown, we need a place for the people to park. So do we put a fire station on a public parking lot? Or do we look on...
Sure.
Three blocks west.
But it will, but it will fit. Like everybody's saying they weren't sure it would fit.
Put it down there by Mrs. Powell's property down there. But, yeah, we, there's, there's so many variables right now that, and just unknowns. This just kind of, and I appreciate you wanting to bring this up for discussion, but I, I think too, again, with Mr. Taylor, let's just hang tight for a couple, four more months and see what becomes of this feasibility study.
My, my concept is, we're going to talk about this a lot.
Well, there's, there's a possibility, and I probably shouldn't say this, and it's going to be on YouTube. If one of, if, and I expressed if, one of the recommendations was that we cover that district from sixteen mile White Creek for fire and police coverage, which the police already do. What's that going to do with our budget, our volume? And would it make sense? We're Solon's five miles away and we're a mile away. You know, it, it's just one...
Right.
Very, very possibility.
And it won't negate, of course, our contract with Nelson.
No.
No, no, it'll just be something that, however the powers will be to work out, that, that'll take away, if we move the fire station over that way, then that'll take away from that. So we, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have to be separately located and the feasibility study is going to tell us might be the best place to do that.
Mr. Mayby, do you have a question?
I want to make sure that I understand, there are no odds here. Our side of it, we're taking it to the fire department, how can we help things out? We, our group, me specifically, I guess, we always have plan A, plan B, plan C, just the way we think of crap, we probably don't need to think about, I guess. But we're always looking at how we're going to move. So if we move this way right here, and that doorway's blocked, we can move this way right here. If that's blocked, we can move this way. Ultimately, all we're concerned about is, we have an outstanding fire department, it's all grown buildings out there in, and what can we do to help along the way? So everything that we're doing as far as the CBTP has this plan, this plan, this plan. We're looking at the master plan for Cedar Springs, and we're trying to make sure that that stuff comes truly better our community. All we're doing is looking at helping out Marty and his group of guys, they're a whole bunch of people, and they do an outstanding job. What can we do to help? I mean, they've all grown their building and she's getting old. So from our side of it, hey, if they go with Cedar and Solon, and that's the best thing, and that's what Marty and his group says, yeah, that's what we want. Hey, that's what we support, there's no odds here, it's a win-win situation. Ours is an insurance plan if you want to, I guess. Okay, so just always know we have A, B, and C, always, always, always. So if you hear things, always ask us questions because we're planning and looking. We never let anything stand in our way. We decide what we're going to go after, and we don't say, well, we don't have enough money. No, no, we're going to go after this, and we're going to figure out how we're going to do it. Does that make sense? We do not put things up in front of us to stop us or slow us down. All right? So please be aware of that.
Mr. Mayor? Can I talk to you directly?
Uh, yes, sure it is. I remember, okay. Kind of piggybacking onto the idea of multiple ideas going at the same time so that, you know, we don't just get frozen up on one idea or waiting three or four months to be thinking. If we were actually looking at, say this recommendation is that we need to build something up near Solon area, cover the fire there, fire area, and we're still giving services to Nelson Township. Obviously, we're, you know, that's, that's a difficult thing to put one fire barn. What about two smaller facilities? That's a one of those. That isn't definitely a, but...
Is this a matter of discussion?
But, we're talking about a problem of how do we service Nelson if we're located up on White Creek? How do we service Solon if we're down somewhere off of Main Street? You know, this is just enough. And, and I would expect, you know, that we'll get some clarity on that as a, as a report. Let me think though, that that's pretty much written in our paperwork, that we already have, that we're covering parts of Solon, that we are responding to their calls. We need to be somewhat close to them on mutual aid. I know, but we do do that. And don't we cover some of their territory all the way?
We do not cover unless we have a, well, we have an automatic aid agreement with everybody in Kent County, including Spencer Township. We have a mutual aid agreement through Kent County. And an automatic aid, depending on how the box alarm is set up, is anything if there's confirmed fire and/or smoke in the structure.
Okay, so we never go into Solon down there?
We do not go into Solon Township unless we're asked.
Did anybody finish, please?
Well, I was just trying to get an answer, and there you were.
I know. Well, we're, we're running in circles here now, I want to keep us going in a straight line.
We don't go into Solon Township unless we're asked.
Got it. All right. So if the recommendation comes back that we need to follow through on that, that we would need to be closer to Solon, the idea of a split, two-building system might be reasonable. I don't know, financially reasonable, that's a decision we have to make. Yeah, but it's an idea. Okay.
I'm concerned, fellow council persons, about, you know, I know the study is in effect, but I think some of these things are a stumbling block for us moving ahead. I know Marty and I discussed things a few, three years ago when I was in the mayor's seat. And we basically got nowhere at that time because the fire department wanted more bays than what would fit on that property behind the Crescent Library. I'm, you know, what's wrong with doing our thing? We have money. We have people that are giving money. And from what I understand, there's some more money available. So why do we have to worry about playing field township or what Sand Lake is going to do? I mean, we can still continue our contracts with those that we have contracted with in the past. We can do our own thing. You know, these studies can take forever. And we need to move ahead. If we're going to have a library, if we're going to have some things here. I probably won't be around either, Marty, when the fire barn is built and the library is built. That's my concern, folks, is not getting bogged down. We've gone around and around and around, just like you say, Mayor, tonight, and we're getting nowhere. Let's consider ourselves. We're the ones. Why are we, why are we worrying about some of these other people? We've maintained ourselves for years and had a fire department, a police department, and all of that. Enough said, but I, I just, I hate this stumbling block. Always stumbling block. We're stumbling over something. We can't do this until we find out this. If there's money available, why aren't we moving ahead? Enough said.
Okay. Any other discussion on this before we move on?
Can I, can I ask a final question of the chief?
Sure.
So just to clarify, um, obviously, we feel like we need to finish up probably with the study. It's very close to being done. And we appreciate that the chief did that. But you have, the study aside, a basic idea of your needs and...
Well, I, I can't recall the exact verbiage that Mr. Phil Del and I had two or three years ago when he was mayor. But I don't remember asking for more than what I need.
Sure.
I have three engines, two rescues, a grass rig, a hazmat decom trailer, and a Model A that is not on site.
Needs to be inside.
Okay, two of them vehicles are not on site because I don't have room to put them.
Right.
I'm not sure what the footage is between the vehicles, we do not meet that. You have to have ten feet between each vehicle, six feet from each wall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I believe the statement was, I want a nice building that's going to house what I have, whether it be double bays or single bays or whatever, to meet them needs today.
And you have a pretty good idea of what that looks like?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question. So, so if we move forward, wherever we move, at the end of this, um, because my understanding is, again, to clarify for Mr. Mayby, there are a set of basic plans that exist...
One, two, three.
That could, in theory, go to a variety of different locations.
We have a footprint on paper by Mr. Gus that, that meets our needs today.
And you feel, that was my question, you feel good about that?
It will fit on the property behind the library.
Because I don't want to start down a path that doesn't meet your needs.
This footprint that Mr. Gus drew up does meet them needs.
Okay, I just wanted to hear that from you, I didn't want to just hear from other people.
Okay.
And then we can talk about that going in a number of places based upon what we learned from this study.
Well, this is, the footprint from Mr. Gus is for the building. That doesn't consider parking or anything.
Right.
And that, that building that he has on paper does not include offices, that's just apparatus.
Okay, so is that something that needs to be included?
We need an office somewhere.
Okay.
I'd like to have an office, look down the future thirty, forty years, because you're going to build a thirty, forty, fifty-year building, you're not going to build a five-year building.
This is why I'm asking.
Um, we need handicapped accessible, if it's a public building, we need the his-and-her day rooms, his-and-her bathrooms, maybe a wake training room, meeting room. Right now, when we have, we host meetings, we, we pull trucks out of the apparatus bay and pull them up in the apparatus bay because there's not enough room in our office. Again, I don't want, I don't want the world, but I want something.
This, but this is, this is part of the conversation that I wanted to have. I, I know, I went to your fire barn, I, I know it doesn't meet your needs.
Well, it, it did when it was built in nineteen eighty.
Well, and the current libraries met the fire barn's needs in nineteen thirty.
We shared that, we shared that life building with the library when I joined in seventy seven.
I'm pretty sure it didn't meet your needs then.
It did.
Well, it did. It, uh, we had two inches in on the grass rig. That's all we needed.
That's all we needed.
Sophisticated dispass.
Yeah. That's another story from another time.
Okay, I thank you for your candor, chief.
All right, any, like I said many, many, many times, the door's open, come on in, we'll set it off.
Because as we make this, I too feel a responsibility to make this go forward into the future. And I'm a little bit younger maybe than you or Mr. Hall. Although I'm kind of well-preserved. I'm older than I look.
I say nothing. Okay.
But we, we need to start having this conversation. So I would encourage all council to, like, ask yourself some of these questions, look at city property that we have, think about, you know, maybe we all go have conversations with Chief Fraser, talk about what they need. And start looking at what are our options going to be, because the current one we have is, is not working.
Okay, then here we will have further discussion on other meetings here, so. The next large discussion we will be having will be the library, and I hope to keep it at a minimum. It's getting late. Mr. Tony, please. Our, our camera only goes for two hours. Just maybe we're over that.
I'm going to be all camera, good. Everyone, thank you very much, Mayor, council members for hearing me. I'm going to present you a little bit of the concepts about what the library is looking for and a little bit about what we're trying to do. I've got some plans here, the conceptual plans I'll pass out so that you can look at them and at least get an idea of what we're looking at. All right? The library has totally outgrown what we've got. I mean, Donna says, you know, just our summer reading program, have to do it out on the lawn, I do DPDW for mowing. And, you know, you have to use the park and everything else. So looking at the future and what we have, and with all the technology and stuff that has to go, I mean, we don't even have places in the library right now for people to sit, plug in their phones or plug in their laptops and work on them. You know, I only got six computers in the library right now. And if I hold a class teaching something, you know, six people is all I can teach. So what I'd like to do is at least give you the first, you know, this is the conceptually we're looking at. And if you want to pass this around. These are the four different sides of the building. What we're looking at is all four sides being the front. So like the front and the back, the sides, they'll all be presentable, it's not going to be like a loading dock area, things like that. All right? The library is going to sit sort of diagonal on the, on the property. We're looking at right on the corner there, main. I have, let's see, here. This one, if you want to pass one, is what we're presenting as, but inside of the library. And based upon the site property itself, this is where we're going to have it. To give you an idea, we've been doing fundraising, we've gotten donations and everything else. We are looking at probably 1.5 to build it, put stuff in it, things like that. We're about, roughly about 700,000. So we're halfway there. CBTP and us are going to be holding a kickoff in September, trying to raise more money. We're looking at the eightieth birthday, trying to use that as some groundwork too. The concept is, you know, we want to have a place for the people to live, to learn, and to grow. This place will be technolol, technic, it's late, I'm sorry. It'll have technology that will bring it into the future. We're looking at trying to have like a room for the businesses, to have teleconferencing, for other parts of the country. It'll do us, and it's going to be beautiful for programs. Now, if you take a look at the site plan, you'll also see that we've got our parking set up, so it actually deals with the fire barn. And we're putting extra parking on the other side of the fire barn until the decision is made to move the fire barn. I'm just trying to give you a quick idea about what's going on. Any questions I can answer, I'd be more than happy to.
I was thinking of, this option, when I had preference to this, our last planning commission meeting, they did a introductory tentative site plan overlook.
Yes.
And review. So there's a lot of discussion there, a lot of things come out, a lot of direction, so.
One of the biggest things that the commission is going to have to decide on, the library's been going on the basis of, we're going to build the building. It's on city property. One of the things we ran into in the planning commission is ownership of the property, ownership of the building. We can't have a contractor come in and build on city property if we don't have the property title, the ownership. Dealing with who's going to own the property, who's going to own the building. The library can maintain the, you know, maintain the functioning of the building, but if we build it, does the city want to own it? And do we want to end up with another lease like we have right now for ninety-nine years? These are all questions you guys are going to have to discuss and decide on what you're willing to go into and how far you're willing to go into it. I'm going to be taking information back to the library board when they meet and giving them some options and having them, because they haven't decided specifically, you know, what they're going to do as far as property and stuff, because they're going to have your decision. The building itself, you know, we'll build it, but does the city want to own it and maintain it? And we do the operations and lease it like we have now. Because right now, we're just leasing the building from the city and trying to do our programs. Maybe that's the way to do it. We'll help build the building and everything else, and it becomes a city building on city property, and we do the routine maintenance and the operations like we are now. Discussions, that's what's got to be done right now. Any questions? Yes.
So would, are you looking for a straw poll from the mayor tonight to see if the city council would be willing to take ownership of a library building if you were to offer it to us? Because we can't just do that, like, you have to say, would you like the building?
And that's why I'm doing this, because what I've been told from various areas and everything else is, no one has actually come to the city commission and said, this is what we're looking at. I'm opening up the door and I'm saying, hey, these are our plans, these are our thoughts. I know you're not ready to make any type of decisions as far as that. All right? If I need to have information to go back to the board, and if you're willing to do a straw poll, at least give me some, something I can go back to the library board with, I would be more than happy to take that information back to them. But that would be up to you and the mayor. The biggest thing I'm looking at is just trying to get the discussion going and trying to get the movement, because, you know, we're already out there quarrying, we're already out there doing site work and stuff like that. If we want to start letting bids in February and stuff to start breaking ground, these things have to be decided first before we can even go to the planning commission and say, okay, this is the ownership of the property, these are the site plans, stuff like that. Mayor?
Just a couple of comments for the council. I think it's probably more appropriate for the library to ask, or present us with options to consider. I think we talked before, you know, you want to own the property, you know, if you want the city to give you the property so you can build your own building, what, give us some options of what you're looking for, and then I think, my recommendation to council would be that, you know, that if it's going to be ownership of the, of the property to build a building, so you will worry about titles and things like that, how much property do you need so we could develop a special parcel for it, carve it out for that? Or if you want, if you want ownership, what does that mean for the city in terms of costs and...
And that is why we're doing this presentation, to at least open up that dialogue, give the city, hey, this is something that's on the plate. The library does not, cannot ask you and say, hey, give us this property, give us this building, you know, we're going to build it, without at least you having a chance to talk about it and decide what you, what you feel is proper. I'm going to go back to the library board and let them know that Mr. Thad said, I'll talk with the mayor as to what format and stuff that you would like to have us do it, but the board is going to have to also decide. We're trying to bring the community into our heart, and we're looking at this and some of the other things to really draw it together. I appreciate your time. I'll collect the plans and stuff after the, yes, let me have.
Have you gone to other cities and towns and seen or heard how they've set up their libraries?
They do it every way. Sometimes the city owns it, the library operates it, sometimes it's on city property, I mean, it's all over the board. Donna's been, done an excellent job in trying to gather that information from all the Lakeland Co-op and some other areas. The biggest thing we don't want to do is we don't want to be in debt when we open the doors. We want to be able to manage it, we want to be able to operate it, and we don't want to sit here with a big bill. That's our biggest thing.
Mr. Thompson, do you have anything to say?
Well, I agree that we need to move along with your decision on how we're going to do that so that they can proceed. Because it is one of the things, it's the homework for the creation portion.
Correct.
If I just want it to happen.
Okay.
I would look forward to hearing back with some options. I don't, I don't know enough about how other communities handle their library to know what's going to work best for you. Because while I know that the people we have today are all very well-intentioned, in forty-five years, I want to make sure it still works for the library too. So I would look forward to hearing back with some options and what you would like to see happen, because we want to work this out for you.
I appreciate that very much.
I am open to whatever the library needs their needs. If it needs to be the city owning it all and doing a ninety-nine-year lease, I'm very open to that. If it needs to be the city deeding over property to the library and... If it needs to be the city deeding over property to the library, and provided that we can do that, which I'm assuming we can, is to fund a donation from the Holtons maybe, I'm open to that as well. Whatever works for the library, just we need to know what that is.
Thank you.
I think that the library board needs to get together and make a decision on how they want to go. For instance, you know, option would be to have the city, or the city own the building and you lease it and run it, or city, or the library own it and operate it, or the library board own it and operate it. I've read Mrs. Clark's reports of several communities in the area around, and it's all over the place. There's, there's library boards own it and operate it and run it, or it's a private company owns the library, the library owns it and runs it, so it's wide open. So, I guess the recommendation that I would give, and I think the rest of the council is in agreement, that...
Do we come back?
...set down and submit to us what direction you want to go.
Okay.
Of how the ownership will be, and then we will have to decide that.
That sounds wonderful. I appreciate your time very much. I'll pick up those plans later. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one thing? Historical perspective for our council. Besides the, the Navy's purchase man, or the whole former purchase man dedicated that property for the use of a new library, only for a new library. Under Jerry Homenga, and I'm sure many remembers this, there was a meeting between library board, then city library board, city manager, Homenga, other council members, DDA people, and there was discussion about, even at that time, what do we do with the fire barn so that we can build a new library? When Homenga and the then city council quoted that bond to buy the rest of that property, it was specifically for the library. That's what it was for. Now, that doesn't mean things don't change, and that we, we are not stuck with what Jerry Homenga and that council did, but that is the history, and we are stuck with what the Holtons invested and what the Navy's invested. So, I think all of that has to be considered, as we as a council think about that being our property, really, you know, we have to say it's our property to use for the library if we want to look at that historical perspective.
We entered into contracts with the Navy's and the Holtons when we took that property as a bond, as a donation.
Yes.
That it was for a library. We don't get to change that each day.
Well, not without getting back...
Right. As long as that property was donated with those specifications and we accepted that, that's what it needs to be for. Now, however that works for the library board, if we own it and give you a 99-year lease for a dollar, fabulous.
A year, got to pay a dollar a year.
If, if we do that...
I, I got a dollar.
A dollar. That's to be honest.
I was joking, I was joking, Mayor.
Or if we deed the property over to the library in a suction that makes it so that they can completely, as long as the Holtons and the Navy's get their blessing on that, then it's not a violation of the original term of the donation, I'm totally supportive of that as well.
Thank you very much.
Having been on the library board for six years, on the other side of that, I also would really like to see this happen.
I appreciate your time very much, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We've discussed the library, so we'll move on to item K, the community building development team. Is there, okay, this is Wolf representing. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
At our last meeting, you had said that there was a cost breakout of the operations of the new, to come for a better word, library? You had a cost breakdown of the operations of that new building?
Not yet, no.
Okay, well, I may have missed something.
I think it's a bit back on perhaps, it's not an answer to...
Okay, that, that, that...
He said that was going to the library board.
Yeah, well...
We're looking at some scenarios and some budgets, of, you know, we do have some mail to be done.
Okay, um, I guess...
I don't have a proof to make for it, but we're just, you know, what they're going to look at, so we can do the...
But you haven't come up with an actual operation cost, a monthly cost of that building?
It depends on whether we own the building, which will increase our cost, or if the city owns the building.
Okay.
That'll be a totally different type of budget.
My question is then, could you, do you have copies of that?
Well...
Of the two scenarios?
Of the two scenarios, yeah.
No.
Well, we, we have it in our committee, and we can finish it.
I guess, is what I'm asking, is it possible before you, your board submits your request to us, if we could see that, that would definitely probably help in our decision or...
It would be my pleasure to give that to us, if it's possible.
Okay, thank you. You could cover that through the city clerk and get it to us in our package, okay? The reason I asked Mrs. Wolf about that, there was a discussion at the planning commission that there was some of that out, and I was, I must have misunderstood. Okay, back to...
Okay. Thanks again too for putting us on the agenda, and the reason for our urgency is just again for your consideration and discussion so that we might move to the next step with your blessing and in a direction that you would support this. You'll remember last spring, we submitted a use agreement to you outlining that the community building development team would cover all costs of the construction of an amphitheater, a boardwalk, rain garden, and a sculpture, and that you would own and maintain those facilities. I know there was no formal action taken on that, but we tried to several months ago implement that that was our hopes and dreams and desires. And if I remember correctly, you came back and said you would like some ideas on possible operating costs, but that before you could really do anything, that we needed to take the overall site plan to the planning commission and get some direction from them on this whole project. So, we did present to the planning commission on Tuesday, and they felt that really, they, they needed to know who would own the facilities before they could act on it. So, I'm coming back for some help and some clarification so that we, at this point, move forward in a direction that is most efficient and most productive and, and will be loaded with a sense of confidence at the end, which I hope is very soon. So, my question for your consideration is indeed, will you please consider owning the amphitheater, the boardwalk, the rain gardens, and the sculpture, if indeed we cover all costs? And obviously, any facility that you might own, it is totally up to you how and you operate it and what you do and how all of that's going to work. If I could suggest possibly a couple of scenarios that may perhaps address your questions and concerns about any operational costs. First of all, is that the amphitheater and the boardwalk will be constructed, of course contingent upon your final approval, but will be constructed in such a manner and with such materials that it will be as maintenance-free as humanly possible. Obviously, anybody can do anything to a structure at any point in time, which is out of our control, but it is certainly our intent to present to you a boardwalk that would be composite materials and wouldn't need to be stained and painted, and a, and an amphitheater that is brick and, you know, all of those things. But evidently, we cannot go any farther until we address the ownership issue. So, we're back to you again, just trying to help and clarify this. As far as operational costs, a couple of suggestions, again, I just would throw up your, your consideration, again, that you're, hopefully it will be your structures. I can't see much with the boardwalk, the rain gardens, the sculpture. The amphitheater will have some electrical costs, there may be some maintenance, there will be maintenance costs, no structure goes totally maintenance-free, hopefully it'll be low maintenance. Couple of things you could do, obviously, the city could take complete control of that operation and implement fees that would cover any expenses, including any staff or anybody else that may be involved. Another thing I'd ask you to consider is an organization that you're a member of, and that's the Cedar Springs Area Parks and Rec. They are very, very good at this, they work very closely with the school district, they are very good at managing facilities, they're licensed, they're insured, all of those things, and perhaps that would be something you would consider returning to your partner to manage the amphitheater.
I hear or understand that the Parks and Rec is willing to take over the management of that?
I can't speak for them, but they have been very involved in our board, we've had that discussion. I do not know that their board has officially acted on that.
But they're receptive.
But they are very receptive and like any negotiation with anything, like the school did, and like everybody does. I, I know they're very interested, it would just be a matter of working out the details. And I will say the community building development team board has already, you know, when we submitted that use agreement, we have already documented and recorded in our notes that that's, that's our hopes and dreams, and we do have board support on that concept. Also, there has been mention that it's not been actual board action, but we could implement that if that would assist you at all in making a decision. A $25,000 fund set aside for that first year of operation for the amphitheater. And again, that has not been board approved, but has been discussed, and if that helps at all, we would be willing to do that. But we just want to get the owner issue addressed so that we can go back to the planning commission and keep moving forward. So, if you, if a straw poll, any clear direction that you can give us, we will move forward and do whatever we need to do.
Mrs. Taylor?
Similar, similar concerns, and we've talked about that, is knowing what ownership means in, in terms of costs, and I don't know how we can do that, but it'd be difficult to just willingly accept it, not knowing what those costs might be in committee, that could be, the committee could do that. That's my only concern. So, so council can really evaluate what they're, what they're getting into and fulfill the commitment that they're making.
And I just don't know who or how that budget could be prepared. It would depend on who uses it, how much it's used, what it's used for. But again, I think the Parks and Rec is very familiar with creating a budget that will address the electric, which is the only, there'll be some cleanup, I mean, I, I, that's not my job, but they are very good at it. So, I don't know how I can, I don't want that to be the barrier that I can't present to you a in writing cost, this is how much it's going to cost. I, I don't know who can do that. So, I don't want us to get completely stopped with that one question.
I guess, um, let's say to move there, to get their process moving to build this amphitheater, what steps would they have to, or we have to, or what would they do?
Well, first of all, I think the, the biggest thing is, I don't think you have a, you weren't going to buy a kit for the amphitheater, now you're looking at designing your own? I'm an architect right now.
Okay.
But again, we understand that the structure has to be approved by the planning commission, and the structure has to be approved by you, we completely understand that. But if I'm understanding correctly, we cannot move forward at the planning commission level until we have a clear understanding of the ownership level. Is that correct?
Yes, make care of it.
That is, that is what I walk away with then.
How do we get past that?
So, we can't even submit the drawings, or submit the plans, or go one step further.
And ownership could be construed as, you know, a lease, or, you know, they have to be able to control the property.
Who?
The community building development team has to have control of the property.
To build it?
Or you're going to turn it over to someone?
Well, you go to the library. Okay, then, I guess the short, long and short, that if the community building development team would request a lease of that property to build the amphitheater, and then we would request a lease to build, let's say, the flower garden, and a lease to do, or one big lease to do all three projects, and then there would be, let's say, if it's awarded to them, then they could go build it all, and then they would turn it over to the city, if the city obviously to accept it.
I'm, I'm a little confused, can I ask a question?
Is that the direction or kind of...
Well, you're talking two different things, a lease, normal...
Well, to build, something to get them permission to build on that, our property, the city's property.
We have a Boy Scout building in Morley Park right now. We have a Boy Scout building a pavilion in Morley Park right now. We didn't lease them any property, we didn't go into an agreement about how we were going to maintain it, we said, "We would like to build a pavilion," bless you, thank you. Yes.
And what, and what?
And we did it.
Okay.
I don't understand how this is different.
Well, I think, I think it's a couple of things. Perhaps that's slipped past the, the council when we talked about it, that might be one thing, about even discussing about ownership or anything like that. The other thing with that too, is that it's the size and, and the complexity of the structure, it's just, versus like this, you know, post would, you know, would have a roof, so, you know, whatever, it happened, but what do you want to do with this one?
Yeah, okay, so I...
That's the thing.
All that. How do we move to the next step for the community building team to, what, what do we move the next step?
If it's a lease, that's an option?
We don't want to lease it, we want you to own it.
This, this, this lease would be for you to build it, but then once you build it, you would turn it to us, I guess, that's what Aaron thought.
No, no, that's not the one I said, you know, they could control the property by having a lease.
Okay.
For the property. They could also control it by, you know, the city owning it, or they own it. There's a different, different option.
I think their option, they want to control it by having the city.
We want to build it and donate it to the city, and, and help you create a budget that would cover any costs on the amphitheater, which I believe would be very minimal. I know there'd be electric and then, you know, long-term maintenance, but I, I don't know, I, I don't think it's going to be a big problem if it's properly managed.
Mr. Mayor, we have a Veterans Park where a group of people came together and built a park on city property. We didn't lease it to the veterans. We said, "Thank you for building a park." If there's some expense, we, you know, there's a light bill at Veterans Park.
We mow it.
We mow it. We do that, that's a thing cities do, we do that for community safety. If there's some expense to mowing the lawn and property that we already own and already mow, I'm having a difficult time understanding why we have to have an absolute dollar amount on maintaining a piece of property that we already contain, because someone wants to generously fortify and improve that property, I know it's sunk off.
Okay.
Do we have within our jurisdiction a possibility of selling a described portion of any city-owned property for a $10 bill, or a dollar, or what? Let them go ahead and build their building, if that's the idea that you want to give it back to the city. I don't, I don't see anything so complex about this. We're, we go around and around and around stumbling over what if?
Okay.
I think it never gets done with what if.
And keep in mind that this is just the first phase of that whole area expanding along the White Plains Trail and above the creek and above, and, and possibly over, so I hate to get in, you lease this little section, and then you've got to go over here and lease this little section, and then you've got to go over here and lease this for the sculpture, or this for this. We want the city to own it and enjoy it, and the residents to take ownership in it forever, it's a, it will be beautiful. We, we don't want to try to take over your control or your ownership of it, we want it to belong to the city. We're going to pay everything to build it, we're going to even put money aside, I believe, to help that first year on any costs. I, I am just, I don't know how we move from that.
No. We're done. Mr. Manager, would you please check into this, see what we have to do to expedite this? Through the planning commission, wherever it needs to go.
I've already asked you to, in the new communication, to sit down and talk and go through this.
And he did, okay.
Okay.
And the only other thing is, I just...
Excuse me a minute, I'm not finished, thank you. We would need to get some type of result, come back to this board by next... We would need to get some type of result, come back to this board by next month to do what we're going to do on this property for the library, or not the library, but for the amphitheater, the flower garden, and the boardwalk. What agreement do we need to make or decision this council needs to make to make this happen, or if the council decides to make it happen? We need a motion for next month for that to happen. Everybody understand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very, very much. And then I just, a little, we're just going to submit, just to help us understand more clearly, we are going to submit a letter for Freedom of Information Act, for a copy of the letter that the city planner sent that was referred, that was referenced at the planning commission, just to help us understand what he pointed out as concerns with our initial site plan. It will just help us be more informed of what he sees as potential issues. We're also going to request an unapproved draft version of the planning commission meeting just again, so that we can better understand what was said and what we need to do for the planning commission. We're also going to ask for a copy of the guidelines that were referenced about the PUD, because there was a great deal of discussion about extending the PUD that you're considering now up. So these are just some things that we're doing, and then we're also asking, I know this is Tony told me it's probably not, doesn't fall under the request for information, but we're also, we'd like just in writing some assistance on the necessary steps we need to take, the order of those steps, and who needs to do those, just to help us better understand what is expected of us so that we can do it. So I am submitting that in writing, and I'll give it to the clerk today, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just circulate yourself some time and money, the, if you go to the planning commission packet for Tuesday, it's online, that will be in there, that current's letter on the site plan, so you can just print that off. The draft minutes I, will, probably won't be ready until when Linda Lynn is on vacation next week.
They're ready right now.
Okay.
I just give you that stuff. You can look for it. Well, whatever you want us to do, we'll do. We are doing a very good job of communicating, and we're just trying to make sure we, we put it in writing. That helps us to formulate our thoughts and be clear. So we're doing that really just to help us be more
I just want to point out a lot of that stuff
I know the minutes aren't available until after the meeting, but we're asking for the unapproved minutes.
Taylor.
All right. Thank you very, very much.
In both, I want to thank you. I know it's handed down, I guess, for me and them doing city level where we're talking about that, and Cedar Springs and the whole, and citizens of Cedar Springs are talking and sharing and having dialogue about what that's going to look like in the Gulfport on a way to problems, rather than looking at problems that can stop us. So I want to thank you very, very much. Very enjoyed my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now, please, I attend the city manager's report. The same rubber that's in the council packet, we discussed it in the workshop, asked them any questions, and we'll go over it again. I would suggest probably the same with the other department reports unless council has specific questions. Okay, is there any discussion or questions from any of the departments listed? Last chance. Okay. There's no comments on any of the departmental reports, boards and commissions, any of the, okay, at this time of the evening, this will be council comments. We'll start with Mr. Clark.
My water was turned off this morning, and beans did not tell me it was going to turn off. I'm sure they did, though. I'm really
There was a letter left at your residence, whether you received it or not.
Yeah, probably.
There was a letter left at your residence.
That's what they'll bring, and I'm not really complaining. I figured they'd let me know. I'm just sad, I went down and saw the whole, where they're working it, it's good, good progress going on there, so. Yeah, he ain't for us, Cedar Springs. I am unhappy with my computer, and we had tonight, Tom, I almost, I'm just here, but whoever, if we need to get Zyoteck in here or something, our computer tonight, Molly's computer was down, went down, Pam's at Perry's, Rose's at mine once. We need to do something about that. I, I don't, and right now, mine's completely off. So that, I would like to have something done next week. Yeah.
Next week?
Next month. Bye. Mrs. Clark.
I sure hope we can help you guys on the CVP out in the library, and looking forward, I might not even be around by the time the library's on, but who cares, you know? It's a beautiful building, and I'm looking forward to seeing it put together. Thank you, you guys. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Palmer.
Thank you to all of the people trying to do all these amazing things for our community. I am confident that we're going to get there. We have had lots of really fabulous people, Boy Scouts who built pavilions, the previous pavilion that eventually fell apart, the one that is being built right now, the one built staging area, the Rotary has given pieces of buildings and so on. I, I'm flummoxed at why this is even a difficult decision, even if there is some expense on the city's annual. This is an exceedingly generous and valuable gift that will increase the actual economic value of our city property, but even more importantly, our social and quality of life value for our citizens. And even if we have to pay some money to deal with that, we need to do that. It's the right thing to do. So I'm confident that our city manager will help us find a way to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Hopkins.
Well, I'd like to thank the community building development team for all that they're doing with helping us fulfill our master plan. And also in the same fact, I would like to encourage our other council members that if you're not aware of the master plan, to look at it, and we're currently, the planning commission is starting to go into the next phase of redoing the master plan, and I do believe there's options for everybody to have their input on that, and if you could put your two cents into what you'd like to see in our community in the future. There's a lot of good things happening, and most of us are doing it not to make a dollar for ourselves, but to better this community.
Thank you.
All I wanted to do was retract my statement about not being here when this all comes to fruition. You know, just out of spite, for some of you know, we're building a residence at Marshall with our daughter and son in law, but I'm going to keep a residence in Cedar Springs as long as I'm voted back to this council, and I plan on being here to make things happen. My little part, that's a promise.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Mrs. Dixon.
Well, I thank all the groups that are purely the goodness of their heart, are doing things to make our community better, and I'm confident that this council and our city manager will find a way to say yes, because it would be incredibly silly to miss an opportunity like that over operating costs which to me seem like they'll probably be minimal.
What do you mean? Seth?
That's it.
I too would like to thank everyone here tonight for coming. I apologize to anybody if I cut you short, if some of our discussions were good, if they were lengthy, but I have to keep them on track. I'm sorry if I offended or cut somebody short. We have a lot of things to do, there's a lot of things going to happen in this town, and this council is going to have to make some very tough decisions probably in the next seven to eight months. So we, we're moving at the speed of government. So having said that, thank you all for being here tonight, and this meeting is adjourned. You weren't feeling it?